Good morning, and welcome to the Delaware County Council meeting, December 8th, 2020. It's a little bit after 9:00 a.m., and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Donna, you want to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Steve, could we get a roll call, please? Mr. Ballard, here. Mr. Bledsoe. Ms. Chambers. Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Right. Again, we'll direct any questions from the public to the web, the email address, which is countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. Again, that's countycouncildist@co.delaware.in.us. And we're running this meeting today. It's kind of a hybrid. It's a live meeting in the Commissioner's courtroom, and then we've got a couple of council members on Zoom. That's Ron and Jane, so. Uh, let's see, Denise was agenda boasted.
Yes.
And I need an approval of the agenda.
So move second.
We've got it. Okay, all right. I got a motion from Piper and a second from Ballard. Let's all start getting used to it, I guess.
Yeah, get used to it now.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Abstain.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
All right, and we're only doing transfers today, so if you want to start on the transfer. There was not a Finance Committee meeting prior to this meeting, so there'll probably be more questions than typical at the council meeting.
Okay. The first two I'm going to read together because they're all Commissioners. 173 health insurance minus 85,000, telephones 324 plus 10,000, utilities 325 plus 75,000. 173 health insurance minus 30,000, 173 health insurance minus 45,000. 314, that should say juvenile center contract plus 45,000. 342 is insurance plus 30,000, total request zero.
I want your phones.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second by Ryan. Discussion on that. Jenny, do you want to start off by just kind of giving a rundown on what that?
Yeah, sure. So. We have our liability, so everything is kind of like a domino effect. So we have our liability premiums, you know, just for all county business. And they used to invoice us that at the first of the year for everything, and it was hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for liability premium. And a couple of years ago, Steve had asked if I would see if they would do that semi-annually, and they did for the majority of it, which helped a lot. But anyways, nonetheless, at the first of the year, we have lots to pay out in liability premiums. And so by the time that second round comes in, which is usually around August, there's not, you know, quite enough to cover it all. So then I'm pulling from other accounts, and then in the long run, I'm now having to, you know, help that account back out and so on and so forth with a handful of accounts. But nonetheless, I make it work within my budget, and now I'm to the point where I can't transfer within the 300 series anymore, which is what I've always done. Come on, Denise. So I'm pulling from health insurance, which is my, you know, biggest, you know, account that has, you know, money able to move. So like 386 institutional care, that's always an issue every year. That went empty in August, so I've had to cover that account every month. So anyways, you kind of see what I'm saying. I'm helping out each account each month. It's an account, a different account that needs, you know, help. So that's how all that ping-pongs. Does that make any sense?
Well, sort of, but.
Okay.
You took money out of insurance at another date earlier in the year of 21,000.
Say that again.
Took another 5,000 out of insurance then, so you're just putting that back, right?
Yes, I've actually taken a lot out of insurance to help other accounts because they were in need at that time, and now this account is in need. So that's kind of what I'm saying. I'm moving money around to help accounts out when it's needed, if that makes sense. So like institutional care, we all know that goes empty about midway through the year. It's not ever fully funded, but hopefully with new jail, we won't run into this anymore, and this will kind of alleviate that. But that's how that downward spiral happens, but nonetheless, I make it work within my budget. I'm just going back and forth, moving monies to help these accounts when the bills come in. So when community corrections comes in, for example, so my last one, and now these accounts are, you know, dwindling. So now I'm pulling little bits from lots of accounts to cover. So for example, the last community corrections bill was 26,000. So I pulled 10,000 from insurance and 17,000 from workers' comp to cover one month of community corrections. Does that make sense? And so now I have an insurance bill that's come in, and so now I need to cover that invoice, and so now I'm needing to pull from other accounts.
On that, on that example, does the community corrections, does that come out of contractual services?
Institutional care.
Institutional care, okay.
386. And like I said, institutional care went empty back in August. So every month since then, I've been pulling from other accounts to cover those invoices.
So it was underfunded?
Mm-hmm.
You said small amounts, and I don't mean to, to nitpick here, but you're moving 85,000, 30,000, and 45,000. I didn't add them up, but in my head, I can see that that's a lot, that's not a small amount. That's a large amount that you're moving out.
What account are you looking at when you say 85,000?
173.
It's 160,000 total.
Yeah, well, I thought it, that's not a small amount because there's two different items here on the.
That's not the amount I was referencing. I was referencing moving 10 here, 10 there to cover one bill is what I was referencing.
Well, Jenny, I know.
Just as an example, that's not what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, there's multiple invoices that come through for each account, and so you see where that back and forth happens. So like in insurance, that. I was down to about 63,000 in September. And then other little accounts started needing money. So postage needed money, so I moved 10,000 there. I moved 13,000 into institutional care to help out with one of the community corrections invoices. Contractual services needed money, so I moved 10,000 into that. You see what I'm saying? So that's how this downward spiral happens, but like I said, nonetheless, I make it work within my budget, so. Which that's neither here nor there, quite honestly.
From a councilman's point of view, if you have $160,000 left in, in 173 at the end of the year, and I've already checked with the auditor, and I know you've got a lot more than that. Then we've overfunded that budget in September and underfunded community corrections. And I know this is the second year this has come up, and I'm not blaming you at all, Jenny.
Oh, sure.
You're just doing your job, trying to do the best you can. But it, when we're talking about the people's money, and the only reason I challenge you on that small amount is because I don't know who looks at these things online, and I think the public has a right to know. And 160,000 is not a small amount if you're a layperson, just hearing the comments. Because we still have money in health insurance, and I honestly don't, I can't understand why so much, but it's great. It means maybe a fairly healthy year even with COVID, COVID, I guess, but.
Sure.
You're short on utilities, $75,000, and we paid a bunch of money to some company to reduce our utility bills, and it hadn't been extremely cold or hot that I can remember. And.
Yeah.
Why are our utility bills, are you paying out of this account for the utilities on the new building?
So I actually, the utilities come out of our budget, but I don't work with those. Becky handles those. The jail consultants, they of course have been reimbursing us every month for all utilities for the new jail, you know, up until we take full occupancy. But to my understanding, this latest bill, the biggest portion of it is from bills for the old jail.
Hmm, wonder why.
Not sure.
Well, your capacity's down, I mean, your population's down, so not your capacity, but your population's down from what I've been told. So I don't understand why. That's something, something I need to look at.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, when Becky, when I, when Becky and I talked about it yesterday, after you asked me about the utility bills, Becky said the biggest part of her shortage this month is because the old jail's electric, or the old jail's bills are so bad this month.
Okay.
Yeah, she's, Becky said it was 23,000 for the, what we're calling the old jail. I guess it's not old, but.
The current jail.
The current jail. So yeah, that was the main thing that hurt her this month.
Yes, so right now, we.
And we're not done for the month. That's just what's.
Exactly.
In the red right now.
For 75 because she just needs 41 and change to cover what's needed now.
Right.
And I wanted to get her through the end of the year, which is why I asked for the 75.
So you're going to encumber the balance of this 75?
No.
No? Okay.
We're going to have more bills. She's in the red right now, 42,000.
Mm-hmm, essentially.
Because we had to make, we had to make utility payments last week. And we make utility payments weekly. Right now, she's $42,000 in the red, and we'll get more bills till the end of the year. So that's why Jenny asked for 75,000 because it, right now, we don't know. We know she needs 40 right now, and we'll still have more to come yet that'll be paid out this year. That balance will not be encumbered, no. There's probably not going to be hardly nothing there to encumber anyway.
Well, I think we probably ought to ask the Commissioners to have the building superintendent take a look at that over there and see if there's something unusual going on that's caused those bills to go up because that doesn't make sense because that's.
Yeah, Becky, Becky can pull last year's bill at the same time. Maybe it's normal.
Okay.
This time of year, I don't know.
Well, that's a big number, though, at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to be the ones talking so much, but.
Oh, you're fine.
I didn't have anything to do yesterday, so as soon as I got this stuff, I called the auditor, started getting to work.
We're just waiting for you to get done, Ron. There's more questions.
Well, I talked to Scott about it. Scott, Scott knows what I was doing. I didn't call everybody, but I did call Scott because that's my, that's the way I operate.
And just to.
I don't know, I'll let the rest of the council talk now, I'll get off.
You okay, Ron?
Go ahead, Ron.
I'm the fat dog.
The other thing I did want to ask, or at least to clarify with you, was the company that's currently taking care of those bills for the jail, they continue to do, to do that until we are fully occupied. Did I hear that correctly?
That's right, mm-hmm. So Becky does a really good job. She takes, she keeps a tally of everything, and she sends them one invoice at the end of each month, correct, Becky? Mm-hmm, and they reimburse, so that's been a really smooth process, to my understanding.
Perfect.
Can I ask one question?
We're not doing anything over there then.
We're not paying any of those bills for the new building at, at this point?
Right, up until this point, we have not.
Okay.
But where does the reimbursed money go? Does it go back into the utility fund or does it go back?
It goes back in the utility account monthly.
Okay, it doesn't go to the general fund, inappropriate.
No, it goes, we quiet us back into the general fund, then we put it back in the Commissioner's utility account.
Okay, thank you.
But that, that amount for those utilities will go on to the, to the total once, I mean, they, they are paying those, but that's out of the agreement that was done for the build out for the jail.
Yes, that was part of the agreement.
That's correct. So those are, basically, all the utilities that are accumulated at this point would be added to the, the grand total for the jail. And once that's all said and done, they'll be paid, but they'll be paid over time as the jail gets paid off.
Are you referencing just these utility bills?
What's that?
Are you referencing just the utility bills that were?
Well, not just the utility, I mean, the whole, the whole build out and everything will be, they're not, the, the company that's out there is not just paying the utility bills. They're paying those, but they're also, in, in what their bid was or their bid total, they've, they've anticipated what the utility bills would be.
I would imagine, because from the start, it was really detailed what we would be responsible for during the build out and what they would be responsible for.
Yeah, and the utilities was their responsibility.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, instead of, and Becky and I had talked about this early on, and we felt the easiest way to do it was to just invoice them once every month for everything that they owe for that month. Instead, instead of sending them, you know, five, six invoices throughout the month, so.
Okay.
They've been diligent about, you know, paying that back right away.
One more thing.
I'm sorry. Oh, I was just going to say, I know that all that can be so confusing with, you know, moving monies around to cover other accounts. And like I was telling Scott, I know that I could have probably asked for a little bit more in certain accounts, and I could have validated, you know, asking for that increase. But I've, you know, this will be my fourth year, and I, I've always made it work. This year has been a lot more busy. I've been moving monies, you know, more than regularly, I, you know, definitely. But anytime you guys want to see any of that, see what those invoices look like and what leads to that, I have a PDF version, and I keep a paper copy so I can be mobile. Call me, email me, stop any time, and I can show you all that, and it's self-explanatory, really, so.
We appreciate it. And, and again, this is, normally, this is something that we would have handled at Finance Meeting, and.
Oh, sure, I know.
Been so many questions here today, but since it's December, here we are.
Yeah, right, I understand.
Any other questions from council?
I just want to point out one thing more, so the other council members. Since the original document that came out didn't have number 314 as juvenile services contract, there was $40,000 taken out of that account and paid to lease rental, postage, insurance, workers' comp, soldier's burial, I think in November, and now she's just putting it back with a little extra. But I was, I have a question as to what was that lease rental, 15,000?
What's what?
What, what did you transfer into lease rental? He wants to know what the lease rental was for. What do you, what are you paying out lease rental?
So lease rental, my biggest thing is, of course, everyone's copiers.
Copy machines.
Okay, okay.
That's an $11,000 invoice when we get those.
And that wasn't in the budget someplace? Okay.
We've had lease rentals for a long time, and it's always been.
I don't know why you had to transfer to pay it, that's what's.
Because there wasn't enough appropriation in there to start with to cover all the leases.
Right, and I, I had helped the YOC account out. Because remember, I, at one point, you helped use the YOC account to help out another account.
Yeah.
And it's, all of that is in the 300s, and so, you know, I work within that series to cover. It's always insurance, work comp, institutional care, those are my busy, busy big hitters that get large invoices. And of course, when you run out of one or two, then you're, you know, you're just moving money around to cover invoices as they come in. So like right now, I have a $23,000 USI invoice, which is insurance, which will come out of 342. Well, I need money in 342 because I've moved money out of 342 to cover institutional care and so on and so forth. So again, instead of asking for, you know, more money in these accounts, I, I just make it work. Because I feel like it would make more sense to sit down and look at these accounts and say, okay, maybe not increase the budget, but maybe move some figures around a little bit. You see what I'm saying? Just bulk up one account, yeah, thank you. But like I said, moving to the new jail, I'm hopeful will alleviate, you know, a lot of that. So, and hopefully, we'll be on the flip side where we're, you know, bringing in money, so.
Becky, real quick, I would like to see the, the costs. I don't know if it'd be a cost analysis, but what we paid before for the, the old jail versus what we got going out now. I think, for me, that would be interesting because, I mean, it is a high amount. There's no question about it when it comes to the old jail.
Yeah.
Because that's what that expense is going to, so just for comparability.
Any more questions from council? Okay, if not, we need a roll call, Steve. Oh, hang on.
And you still up to the podium, Charlie, because we can't hear you.
I've just, I heard you guys talking, and I was just going to throw out there that the gas bill you're getting for this place and the old jail is all one. Our gas bill, our gas line comes from the old jail, but it feeds this building too, so that's all one bill, or should be. Because we're not hooked on, you know, we're hooked on the same gas. I just want to throw that out there. You was talking about high utilities and stuff. Well, this time of year, it would be high because you're running two very big buildings off of it.
Thank you. Hey, roll call, please, Steve. Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Clerk D125, deputy clerk, minus 4,000, 198 part-time, minus 12,000, 211 office supplies, plus 17,000, 361 equipment repair, minus 1,000. I don't know where my total's at. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a total.
Okay, you got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Rick is not able to be here today. He's on, he is quarantined at home, and he had indicated through a text message that this is furniture for the new office out at the.
Out of office supplies.
What's that?
He can't buy furniture out of office supplies.
Well, I thought that's what he said. Let me read it back here again. Recognize me.
Well, the backup he sent us has got a zero on it, doesn't say anything else about anything. It says amount requested zero.
It's got two, here's, here's what the message says. He has two transfers. One is to pay a contract, the other is for furniture for the new office.
Then it needs to be put in a 400. If he's buying furniture, it needs to come out with 400, not office supplies. Office supplies doesn't cover furniture.
That has to be, doesn't that have to be advertised?
No, you can, you can change it right now, move it to, but I don't know how much he needs for furniture.
I don't either.
You guys care if we call him? Yeah, go ahead and call him.
Call him, see if she'll come up. Not here either. They have.
I think Rick would probably answer the phone.
Of course.
Hang on, we'll see if we can't get him on the phone. Is it a cellphone that you're calling? Okay, I was going to say I've got a cellphone.
Hi, this is Rick's back. Let's move on till we can get ahold of him.
Okay. Okay, go ahead with the next page here. What's that? Okay.
Do you, you know what this is for, Scott?
He said it was for contractual services, which is in the text message.
So the election, when you probably go ahead and do, it's 211 supplies, minus 5,000, 313 contractual services, plus 21,000, office machines, minus 16,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. If you guys have questions, we'll have to move on, on that. Any questions from council? Okay, go ahead and give me a roll call on that, Steve. Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Circuit Court, 315 court ordered testing, minus 300, 441 office equipment, plus 300, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. I'm already off of the last names, aren't I?
Yep.
Uh, any discussion on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Emily Anderson, Court of Administrator, do you want me to explain my transfer?
You just, you just couldn't make it happen without coming here.
My original request is $20, $20.
Well, let's reduce it to 20.
Well, what happened was the laptops I ordered, we got them, and there's no camera, so we had to send them all back, and it was $150 difference. I had 140 in my account, but I found out that a person in a court needed a new chair, so then I had to buy the new chair, so that's why it became 300. So I have 140 in my account, I needed 300, and I needed 420. Anyways, ended up being a $300 transfer that I needed to do. That's what the 300 is for, is a new chair, and then like the difference was 150 on what I owed on the laptops.
Okay, questions from council? Roll call, please, Steve. Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I promise I don't have anything for the rest of the year. Goodbye.
Coroner, 198 part-time. I don't know what that number is. Plus 1,000, 241 evidence bags, minus 1,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Rick, you want to give us a quick explanation there?
Uh, we're just getting our butts kicked by caseloads. We're up, last year, we did 350 total cases. We're already at five, 350? We were at 350 total cases, and we autopsy 188. We're at a little over 500 cases now. I'm, well, okay, almost 600 cases, and we've autopsied 220. So out of almost doubling our cases, I've only added extra all, 30-some extra autopsies in so far. So like I said, I try not to autopsy only if I don't think I absolutely have to pull that cost down, but it's.
Real quick, I want to ask you, is there, obviously, COVID's had something to do with some of this. Is there any relief for the coroner's aspect of things when it comes to CARES Act? Are we looking at that? Is there any reimbursement for you guys? Because you're obviously doing more autopsies than you've done, so.
I don't know.
Okay, I mean, if it's, I don't know if that's something we can check on or not, but I mean, it would help you.
And there's so much into, you know, there's a lot of studies out there talking about, it's not only just COVID that's going up because of the lockdowns and everything else like that. Suicides are going up, drug abuse is going up. You know, last Saturday, we had, in a 24-hour period, not this past Saturday, but Saturday before, we had seven or eight cases. I did. seven or eight cases. I did three overdose deaths in a four-hour period. I think we ended up autopsying. We had, I, I had four people sitting in the cooler waiting on an autopsy on that day for the next day. I'm pissed with four autopsies.
Would you guys check into seeing whether any of that's reimbursable? We can get some reimbursement for that?
Can you go up to the speaker? Because we can't hear you from there.
I will check into the CARES Act and see if we can get the autopsies reimbursed for that. We've had several SIDS deaths this year. We did contact the State Health Department and we will be in rebirth through the fatality, the infant fatality grant. So, I just sent, um, all of the invoices for, we've had two in two months, two children, two babies. I will be getting reimbursed for those.
Those have already been paid for by us.
We pay for them and then we'll get the money back.
So, we're gonna get that money back.
There's, uh, Steve, you know when the deadline is on that? That's coming up here.
Well, the coroner right now is not covered in that.
Okay.
The sheriff, jail, 911, EMS, and health department.
Okay.
It doesn't say we can't try to get, I, I think really by the time they submit, I ran payroll again yesterday. And Heather and Julie did. It's gonna eat up all of the, from March 1 to September 30. It's probably three million dollars.
Okay. Whatever you can do. Thank you.
Hey, real quick, before you guys leave, I, I just want to extend a thank you. You guys have been working hard and I know that from Rick, you know, our correspondence and what I do for a living. Um, you know, I know how hard you guys are working and what you're dealing with. So, I appreciate both of you.
Hope the next year will be a little easier.
We appreciate you guys, guys.
We all are. Steve, roll call please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Communication Center, 195 holiday pay, plus three thousand, 198 part-time, minus three thousand. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. What's that? Okay, I, I think we're probably okay unless the, the council has any specific questions. This is, um,
He's in the red right now. I will say for tomorrow's pay. Becky backed me up three hundred and some dollars, right? Or is it more now? I forget, but anyway. Yeah, this'll cover what he's in the red for tomorrow's payroll, plus the next payroll. So, getting through the year.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? On that? If not, we'll go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Hey, data processing, IJS, 361 equipment maintenance, minus four thousand. 441 office furniture, plus four thousand. Total request zero.
That was wrong.
All right. I'll take a motion from Ron and a second from Ryan, I think. On that, okay.
He was on it.
And let's see, Jim, you want to give us a quick explanation there?
Yes, this is for, uh, office equipment out at the new jail. We're putting in place, uh, we're gonna be working at both locations for a few weeks. I have everything going on, plus everything we're using. We got more space out there than what we had, uh, previously down in the old jail. So, um, we've acquired some new chairs and some new desks for the IT people out there at the new facility.
Is, is your office gonna move to the new facility?
Mine will stay here in the county building. The Justice Center group will be going out there with, with everybody else.
Okay. Where, where are they currently? Are they in this building?
They're over in the Justice Center.
They're in the Justice Center, okay.
Down where the old law library used to be, if anybody remembers that.
Okay. I heard you had some questions in the commissioner's meeting yesterday about the, the phones and how those all.
Yes, that's They're over the period of moving out there. Time frame, but when we do the move, it, there is some concern that we, that's gotta be coordinated, um, because of the phones. If they're, once they're rolled over by AT&amp;T, the phones in that building will be dead. Popped into some workaround and we got a meeting with Level 365, the phone company, uh, that we purchased the new system with, uh, tomorrow and try to work out some, uh, details on how we can accomplish this.
Okay.
I'd like a minute. Yes. Jim introduced me to what's called a dark line way back a year or so ago. Uh, when I asked him about the communications to the new building. Uh, you just said the jail's gonna go black or dark.
I'm sorry.
What happens to our communications cable that we ran underground from the existing jail to the new communication center by the library?
That's, that will still be in place. That still runs the 911 dispatch. That doesn't go from the jail. That goes actually from the IT room down here in the county building.
Okay, that answers that question. Thank you.
The only, the only fiber that's gonna be affected out of the new jail, I'm sorry, out of the old jail is the fiber that runs from the basement of the old jail over to City Hall, which feeds them all the public safety software access. And we're working on, that resolution with the IT over at the city to make that connection still continue. Well, that connection will continue, but a new connection that will suffice what they need.
I know, budget item, but what about the tower? What happened? What's that tower gonna happen, jail tower?
With the acquisition of putting in AT&amp;T ASC circuits, uh, I've worked with Bruce Dunn and AT&amp;T. We put a circuit in between the tower and the 911 facility. So, all that radio traffic will go across this AT, uh, AT&amp;T fiber circuit to take care of that radio traffic. So, the tower will not be an issue.
Unless they sell the building.
No, even if they sell it. I mean, unless the county wants the tower, but as far as whatever's running off that tower will not be an issue as far as radios.
Well, I, I just think in general knowledge, that's something that some need to know about that maybe from my experience I already knew. So, that's why I asked the question.
Okay. Ryan.
Um, this is off topic, but, uh, the conversation of laptops and desktops got brought up
in the last meeting. And I didn't know if that was something that had necessarily been brought up to you. The idea of obviously we're in a different time and mobility is kind of key. Are we moving departments and, and whatnot to more of a, a mobile aspect of being able to work? Or how are we going about doing that? I know there's always, you just never know what the governor's gonna do. So, I mean, if, if someone says you've got to stay home, you've got to stay home. So, then what? How are we still accomplishing business?
Okay, uh, with the last, uh, stint that we had, we had to stay home. We had a lot of the offices had acquired PCs or they already had PCs. And in this last, uh, what, month and a half or two months, Steve worked with some of the offices and we purchased laptops for these, some of these offices to work from home if they need to. If not, every office has got them. A lot of the offices, like the prosecutor's got laptops. Steve's office has got laptops. The courts has got their laptops and they're, they keep them up to date. And
Well, to lead into that, and that's kind of, that was kind of just a preface to the question. I mean, are, are we moving towards that or are we still sticking with the desktop?
At this point, we're staying with the desktops. You know, laptops are, are good in, in my opinion. The lifespan of the laptop is not as long, but I, as far as durability and lifespan. So, that's.
So, people would still have to come here?
If, yes, if they have to do anything. Unless there's specific areas that we have laptops, like the Treasurers bought three laptops. I think Steve's office has bought two or three laptops. Uh, the coroner's bought three laptops. There's like eighteen, eighteen of them we purchased here in the last two months. But it's not a mass changeover, no.
I think the question was that there was a redundancy with some individuals having both a desktop and a laptop.
Can I speak on a little bit of that? So, like on my computer replacement plan, I have to replace laptops more often than PCs because they don't last as long. So, that's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is, uh, like the clerk's office, they can't work remotely because their work is more paper driven. Even, even though we're paperless, there's a lot of things they have to do where they still have to print out things that have to be served. So, them working from home is almost too difficult. Where we can work from home is courts because we do a lot of our stuff through the queues. When, by the time it gets to the clerk, because a lot of their stuff is driven to be sent out for service, they can't work from home. So, they almost can't work from home. So, even though the courts were working from home, they pretty much had to be in their office every day to produce that work, their workload. They can do a lot of things in the queues, but eventually that paperwork has to be printed out for service and whatnot. All of my staff, ninety-nine percent of them purchased their own laptops because we can't have laptops purchased for them because I can't afford to replace them every three years. I can barely afford to replace the PCs every, every nine years. Because you see my computer replacement plan, it's sixteen thousand dollars a year. And I'm doing a seven to eight-year turnaround. And that's still not really a good turnaround. It should be every five to six on PCs. And, and I'm telling, and they tell me laptops should be replaced every four. And I'm not replacing laptops every four. I'm making it last longer. So, I don't know how we would achieve that when most departments don't have a computer replacement plan within their budget. That's just my, like what I see.
Hey, Jim. Jim.
Yes.
Can you explain to Ryan and Jessica and Scott, how, we actually don't log into the county system. We log into our desktop from home. And I think that's their question is, is we all can't just log into the county system. You'd have people going where they have no business being. You know, you don't want people in our finance system that work for the Sheriff's Department or us in the Sheriff's Department system or, so you, you only have the capability of logging into your desktop. So, you actually have to have the desktop and we'd log into our desktop and work from home. You see the same thing on your laptop that's sitting on your desktop at work.
Right. No, I understand what you're communicating there. My question is, why don't we have a VPN system where people log in securely from their home and to
You do.
And then you wouldn't need the desktop because you would log into your VPN.
VPN, you, okay, we use what we call an HTML5 VPN solution, which allows that user from their, either their home computer or a county computer that they have to remote into their desktop at work and do whatever they would do as if they were sitting there. And that's been in place since the start of the, the COVID crisis.
Right.
I mean, it was before that.
Sure.
But it, it even expanded more. So, we, we allowed users at home to use their home computers, even though, you know, we required that they be, you know, Windows 10, you know, antivirus. But with us using the type of VPN we're using, it allows us to only let them get to their desktop and it's like a screenshot.
Right.
And it protects it.
Right, so.
For the county network.
I know in my experience with my, my job, I've had a laptop for thirteen years now. And I log in through our VPN, so it's secure. And then I only have access to the files that I'm able to have. So, on our shared drive, which is out, yeah, which is out on a cloud, um, I can only get to my department. I can't get to accounting. I can't get to, you know, whoever else. And so, my question is like, why would you need the desktop if you had a laptop that you could dock? Either here, right?
Times are changing, then we may have to move to that, but also there's a lot of cost involved in, in setting.
I guess that question, I mean, I think, well, you can have two monitor. I have two monitors and my laptop at home. I mean, I've got two twenty-four inch monitors on my desk. It's great. I think we're open to maybe looking at that because we realize in a year like this, like we need to probably improve our technology a little bit, but I think we just need to have a little more open conversation about that.
I think that there, here a couple of months ago, they come out that we were looking at departments that wanted to have, and I think there's information sent out to departments asking if they wanted laptops. And we've only got, I think we bought eighteen out of the requests. Yeah, well, you had, they had, you had to buy it upfront.
Sure.
And then it was reimbursed. So, that's another problem.
And then if I recall correctly from like years ago, I think I asked you this, are backup servers, are they over at the current jail?
No.
Okay, where, where are our backup servers?
Our backup servers are at 911 dispatch.
Oh, okay.
And they will be moved out to the new jail.
New facility? Okay, thank you.
Is the, uh, while, while you, you just brought that one up, we need to keep laying, laying blocks out here, but, um,
We're just so excited to talk to you.
Is the, um, is the, are the tech, technology capabilities gonna be, um, better? Did all that stuff get updated out at the new facility?
Whole backbone of, at the GLAS is, is all current. I mean, we had this building rewired for CAT 6A for the capabilities of using that. And that's all everything. It was put in out there. Uh, the new switches, all new switches were put in. We're moving one of our old servers that we have downstairs that we used previously out there to be our backup servers out there, but previously it's down at 911. And we'll move our backup storage out to 911 with that, so.
All right. Thanks, thanks for the update in addition to your request, so, I appreciate it.
You weren't here to talk about that stuff last month, so we were just so excited that you were here for us to talk to.
Well, I was gonna say, if you want to put it on the IT committee to, to discuss some of the, uh, things as we look forward, because I just, I don't think any of the way that we're meeting and, and and having to deal with this is gonna just go away after first of the year. I think we're gonna be still dealing with this for a while.
I haven't scheduled IT meetings for the last few months, but I can restart them at the start of the year again.
That'd be great.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a roll call. Are there any more questions from counsel? Okay, roll call please, Steve.
Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Wake up, Jane. If you go back to the clerks, um, that off, that seventeen thousand worth of office supplies really should be moved to 441 office equipment. Or equipment, I guess you know what to call it. Because, um, Rick said, yes, the whole seventeen is for new equipment.
Clarify that. Is that for the new building?
Well, I didn't ask him that. I assume so.
I, I believe it is, Ron.
Yes.
Uh, that was, uh, goes along with the text message. Rick is, um, not feeling well, I guess, this morning. They've, uh, tried to call him and is that what?
Yeah, I went out and talked to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
They got ahold of him and, and asked him a few questions about, um, moving that, but as far as.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to know, so I know how to vote.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Oh.
What was that?
No.
No.
Alexander.
Uh, yes. And I will, um, I will call Rick and clarify that after the meeting or this afternoon. Well, I think it's about some more specifics on that, but I just want to know for my own.
He feels better in the afternoon, he said.
Okay.
He sounds horrible. Okay. Public Defender, longevity one ninety-nine, plus two thousand. Three ninety-nine Court Interpreter, minus six hundred. Transcript expense of one eighty-five, minus fourteen hundred. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Did you guys just have a longevity that you needed to clear up on that?
Yes, Shelley Harvey, Office Administrator, Public Defender's Office. Yeah, we were just short in our longevity line and so needed to clean that up.
Any questions from counsel? Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Highway one seventy-six life insurance minus four hundred. One seventy-seven long-term disability plus four hundred. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
We'll give it to Ron.
Motion from Ron, second from.
Ryan.
And go ahead.
Uh, Cary Di, County Highway. This is just to move the money. We've had some increased changes throughout the year and the four hundred dollars just to get us through the end of the year.
Any questions from council? Roll call please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Uh, prosecutor lit one ninety longevity plus, oh, wait a minute. That four hundred's not supposed to be there. Okay, I'm sorry. One ninety longevity plus six hundred. One seventy-two perf minus six hundred. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
We'll give it to Ron.
Motion from Ron, second from Ryan. Thanks, Ron.
Delayed, I think.
I'm looking, uh, I'm looking at this Donna and I'm seeing, uh, there's a four hundred out there.
That shouldn't even have printed.
Okay.
I think, I, yeah, I talked to Denise about that. I think it was just out there from something else, so.
That's what I thought. And, um, there's nobody from the prosecutor's office.
Right.
Here right now. There, are they still shut down?
I don't know.
Or working from home, I guess.
They were short in their longevity. She had.
Yeah.
Had missed one when she did the budget.
I figured that's what it was. Any questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, then I think Denise printed you off the plane permission.
It was on the internet. I got it.
Marta, um, yesterday she had, she came down, she had to do a transfer real quick. Um, and so we just, Denise just sent you these, but anyway, it's one ninety-eight part-time plus nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. Three thirty-one printing, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Three ninety-one dues and subscriptions minus one or fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents for a total request of zero.
Move to approve.
Got a motion from, second from Jessica. Second from Jane. On that, questions? You wanna tell us about that real quick, Marta?
Sure. Um, if you recall back in September when we were doing budgets, I, uh, went through my budget and said that due to furloughs and other things that I turned back in, nineteen thousand and change to the general fund budget. Well, we made a miscalculation. I should have just turned in eighteen thousand and change. And so luckily, uh, I had enough money, uh, in my three hundred series to transfer it into part-time uh, to cover that mistake that we made when we gave all that money back. I shouldn't have given it back.
You did the right thing and, and you're doing the right thing today. So.
I do have a question.
Okay, go.
What did you say that fifteen dollars and something was in?
Uh, hang on. Dues and subscriptions. Three ninety-one dues and subscriptions.
Well, it didn't print off on what we received.
There's two pages.
There's three pages, but it's not on any of them.
It's down at the bottom of the second page it should have been, but.
Yeah.
You might not have had a legal paper.
Yeah.
I got debt services the bottom of the second page.
Uh, yeah, then you're missing the whole, you didn't print the whole page you didn't print. Cause it's, it's under debt service.
Okay, that's the answer. Well, it says debt service zero.
I know, it's not in debt service. It's under, under other services.
Okay.
Yes.
Blame it on the computer. Printer. Blame it on the printer.
You gotta print legal. Yeah.
I don't have legal.
That's your, that's your problem.
My, my supplier only has regular downtown there in the auditorium office.
Any more questions? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Now, I don't, I think we just, we don't need this, the whole, uh, is that it, Donna?
Yes.
Is that the last, okay, all right. Um, I don't know that we need the whole motion. We just need to motion for transfers, right? We're not amending the salary ordinance on that. We are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause longevity and stuff on the salary.
Well, that's right. Okay.
All right. Well, then in that case, motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one five.
Second.
Come, you didn't make that motion, Ron. Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. And any questions on that? Okay, roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Let's see, we got the transfer. Is the, um, ordinance next up?
Yes.
Is it appointment?
Committee report.
Appointments, okay. We've got an, an appointment, uh, to make to the, um, nine one one communications board that will start meeting after first of the year. Um, we talked to Ryan about this appointment. I don't know that I've got a answer from him.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. We'll need a motion, uh, for, for a, if we're a member of council on there.
I will move to approve, uh, Ryan Ballard as our appointment to that board.
Okay, we've got a motion for Ryan Ballard and a second from Ron. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
abstain.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
We got enough, uh, we got four there, so, okay, all right. You might have had to vote for yourself there, Ryan. That's all right.
I just wanna point out to Ryan, now you, you're in a position where you have to ask a lot of those questions I ask.
Oh, he will.
And I do.
Yep, I think that, I think Ryan is a, a really good, uh, pick. I'm glad he agreed to, to go on there. I, I think when we originally talked about that appointment, it was, it was gonna be the, the president of council, but I always think it's best for us to make a choice, uh, of who we want to be on there. And I think Ryan's got good qualifications and, and will ask those questions. All right. Now is the ordinance up? I don't have a, okay, all right.
My addendum says personnel.
Yeah, we put that on there just in case.
Yeah, I don't think we have any personnel. There's nothing to report on personnel.
Okay.
Yep. So we need a, and we've gotten, um, we need an approval of ordinance twenty twenty zero two two. Is that right? Yeah.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion on that? This is the second reading. Um, Donna's got her hand up.
And I'm just curious, and I would have brought this up, I wasn't here at the last meeting. Why is council approving these rates when it's usually the commissioners? Commissioners establish rates.
Did, um.
I pulled the original. Council did do the original back in whatever year that was.
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah.
But I'm, and I don't know why I missed it back then, but the commissioners are the ones that established rates for fees and stuff, not council.
Yeah, but, and, um, it was our understanding back in the nineties that, um, for an ordinance like this that dealt with finances and a fund, that, um, it had to go in front of council. But so.
Commissioners always do.
You know, we're, we've, we, the commissioners are aware of it.
I'm just curious why council was doing it.
Yeah, right.
Not the commissioners, because any fees for like even EMS or any time a fee's changed, that's all approved through the commissioners.
Yeah, and I don't know if it was because back in the nineties, we were first establishing the fund.
Commissioners do that also.
Really?
Only commissioners can establish.
Well, I don't know who was the attorney back then, but we'll blame that.
I'm sorry to bring this up. I'm just, I'm curious.
I hear from Bill.
Fight there on the first specific statute. It's the D and C five fourteen. It deals only with GIS.
Just a minute, mother.
It only deals with GIS data and services and it specifically says it requires the approval of the county council.
Okay, okay.
It's just this one particular subject matter. In general, I think you're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
It just kind of. It just kind of stuck out and Becky and I talked about it and I said, ugh, I don't remember this back in ninety-six, but. I'm sure I probably questioned it back then, so. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thanks for the question, Donna, and thanks for the explanation, Bill. Any other questions, uh, on that ordinance?
Jane was.
What'd you want, Jane?
Well, the only thing I was going to say is when we change rates out with the fair board, we always have to have the commissioners approve them.
Yeah. Did, I don't know, did you hear Bill say that this GIS, uh, per statute, it is the county council?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on, go ahead, Jane. Jane, you up? You're up.
What?
Your name's up.
Oh, I don't know. I don't have anything else.
Do you have something, Ron?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to rip Donna a little. Now she knows how I feel when I ask these dumb questions.
All right, let's have a roll call, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
I won't be here to ask, but next time it's right.
Okay, we've got that ordinance.
We know it's straightened out. That's good.
Okay, other, other business I've got, uh, on the agenda here to discuss, um, the reorganization. A reorganization meeting and also a special meeting for January the fourth. And we're gonna, I guess, set that at ten o'clock, uh, or after the commissioners meeting, if the commissioners meeting extends beyond, um, that hour. And I need to ask Bill, I guess, we, we will most likely have some business to do there. I've been working, um, um, with the commissioners and the auditor's office and, and our attorneys have been working on. There was a, an issue at budget time in the highway department. I guess that, um, I think it was the furloughs, furloughed employees. You correct me if I'm wrong out there, but I think it was the furloughed employees at budget time. The highway department didn't make a request for, um, salaries for those. Nope, come on up, help me out with the, where we're at on that. It's a little bit of a difficult situation. We're trying to get work through, but.
There was, um, some employees, the positions that were cut from the twenty twenty-one budget and the commissioners would like to have those put in. It was not per se the, uh, furloughed employees.
Okay.
It's funding issue, basically.
Yes, it was a funding issue. Because the amount of money that they say that we're getting from the state, um, we set our budget for that. Um, but the commissioners have come up with to use some creed money, I believe, to help fund that.
They're, they're working. And I know I've talked to James, there has been a creed board meeting and there's been a, uh, meeting of the, of the county commissioners to approve that money. We can't do anything about it today. Um, we've gotta have time to get it worked out, um, and to find out that state board of accounts is o- okay with it.
Correct.
So what we're gonna try and do is have something ready for January the fourth, but I don't know what that is at this point. We're still trying to work through that with, um, auditor's office and the attorneys for council and, and the commissioners and, and we're hoping to, to get some resolution as to how, how or whether this works or if we have to figure out another way to, to do it by the, the meeting on the fourth. So Bill, do we need to, do we need to advertise two meetings, one for the reorganizational meeting and one for a special meeting?
It can be the same meeting.
The same meeting? Okay. Why, what I'd like to do is get an approval.
Put it on the agenda when it's posted.
Yeah.
You can't post it as reorganizational period. You have to put on there what else you're gonna do when you post the agenda.
Okay.
I don't know how you're gonna word it, but you can word it.
Well, we, until we know what we're, what we're gonna do and how, how it's gonna, how, how we would be able to do it, we really can't make a decision on that today as far as what it is. Plus, Bill can come up with some language, um, that we could use, cause we do need to get the meeting advertised, I think by the twenty-first. Um, to be able to advertise that, that special meeting and the reorg meeting for the fourth. But I would plan on being here on the fourth at ten o'clock, but I would like to get, um, uh, an approval from council um, to go ahead and do that, cause we're getting to the end of the year where time cuts off and we'll start back on the, on the fourth on that, so. Tell me what we should, uh, Bill, how should we?
Just a motion to schedule a, a special meeting for the fourth would be fine. And then we'll, we'll, I'll work with the auditor's office on the agenda.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Ron, second from Jessica. Any discussion on that? Okay, uh, roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion seconded.
Ron. Motion from Ron, second from Jessica. On that. Uh, the other thing we'll need to get before we close out, I think I'll take that. Now, you guys that aren't here, can we get an approval, uh, to do your E, E signatures on the paperwork today for Ron and Jane?
You have my approval.
Same here. This is Ron.
Okay. And Bill, do we need to take a vote on that or we?
No, that's fine.
All right.
I'm wondering, before that, uh, meeting on the fourth, the, um, members that were elected at the most recent election need to make sure that they have their oath of office on file.
There was, uh, yeah, you'd sent out, um, I, I had Bill send out, um, the, also the, um, conflict of interest statements and, and also an example of how to, to fill those out. They weren't, um, real clear on what should go where. So you guys should have that in your email.
Ryan.
I'll make sure it, it gets to him if it wasn't.
It wasn't sent to me?
No, uh, the other Ryan.
This is gonna be a problem, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm gonna, I tried to start off with last names today.
R one and R two.
Yeah, well, we'll get it figured out.
You know how I do it. I think of it as Ryan, Ryan Hardware. You guys probably don't remember Ballard Hardware downtown.
He's a hit. Okay, let's see. We got that meeting taken care of, I think. Is there anything else? Auditor's office, you guys have anything? Department heads, any department heads? Uh, okay, well, go ahead.
I guess, and, and this is really, I guess mainly for Bill. I did email board of accounts on this creed money. Cause I've had conflicting things about how they were gonna spend it. Um, this is. This is, and I said, you know, I've, I've been taught that I can't put money from creed to highway, and she said, yes. Plus, she said, we have a county ordinance on the creed, which I had sent, I think you got it, where I questioned. The county ordinance on creed says it has to be spent for new jobs and directly in that creed district. So she says from the ordinance, because I sent her a copy of the ordinance, all disbursements would need to be directly related to creating opportunities for new jobs and investments in the creed district and paid directly from the fund. But this resolution, it's to do paving and stuff throughout the county. We're gonna pay those employees out of highway, then they'll build the creed. But that contradicts what she's telling me. So basically, this is for Bill to check out, just another thing to get prepared for.
Well, this is, this is what we're trying to work through here between now and January fourth's meeting, is trying to get something for y'all to be able to vote on after, on, on the fourth and get everything cleared up to do what the commissioners are trying to do and make sure we stay within the bounds of state board of accounts and, and all that good stuff. So I will continue to keep working on that and, and. Hopefully get, get something for you guys to be able to vote on. I guess I'm, and listen, Bill's help too, so I don't know what your Christmas plans were, but.
Not much.
Okay, and we've got Tony Skinner, Sheriff Tony Skinner up the podium.
Yep, good morning, Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I know he's not here today, but I just want to go on record and thank Larry Bloodsoe for his years of service to the county. Nothing political, we're opposite parties, but Larry's always been a strong advocate for the sheriff's office and for public safety in general, so I just want to thank Larry publicly for, for his service.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Tony. That's, we were, I've talked to Larry a couple of times and he was unable to be at the, the meeting today and last month, so we. We feel the same way. I can tell you, I think that feeling's mutual throughout everybody that's been, that's worked with Larry over the years, so thanks for bringing that up. Anybody else?
Hey, yes, me, Jane. I like tell Melanie she's looking good today.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Ron, you, Ron, do you have anything before we close out?
I just wish you all a very merry Christmas and I'll see you in the new year and thank you all for getting reelected and looking forward to working. I'm, I'm just really, and I mean this sincerely, feeling good about. The people I'm passing the baton on to, because I won't be running for reelection in two years, in a year, so anybody want to run for my seat, it's open.
That sort of locks you in. Did your wife make you say that?
No, I made this one on my own, yeah. Yeah, I need to let someone else take, take the reins and you guys are doing a great job and I'm, I'm pleased.
Well, they'll still be, you got, you got a couple of years left, so there'll still be time to thank you, Ron.
I'll, I'll be glad to help you any way I can. I, I enjoy it and, and I, I really, I, I talked a lot today, but this is all I do now. This is my part-time job, but it's actually my full-time job. I, I sold my last rental in October and I, I, I owned that building. It was a four unit. I owned it for forty-two years. I, I, I felt the seller's withdrawal or seller's remorse almost, but it sure is nice not to have to worry about going to fix this or that or something else, a vacancy, but that was my last of my part-time job, so you guys have got me hundred percent.
Lucky us. Well, I think I'd like to also just make a statement to Tony's point. I know I'm gonna miss Larry. He was a huge asset to us. I know when I came in as a newbie, even same thing, we were different parties, but Larry was always willing to help me understand different things. I mean, I obviously would call Ron and Scott and Jane. But I really appreciate his knowledge, him having that experience as a commissioner brought a lot to the council, and I appreciated that. Same thing with Ron, he brings that extra layer to our, our council. And then, secondly, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season, since I won't see most of you in person again until next year, so Happy New Year as well.
Real quick, I just shout out to Larry, definitely. You know, I think he, he was an example of bipartisanship and, and I, as a freshman councilman, had the opportunity to learn a lot from him, got to bang a lot of questions off him, just to, you know, kind of spitball some things, and he was very helpful and, and very much appreciating. So it's, you know, we're, we're obviously moving on and whatnot, but, you know, Larry, thank you for your service.
Well said.
Again, I'll echo the same, same thoughts as everybody's had with Larry. He's always there, you know, always wanted to know what was going on after the finance meetings and things like that, always, always good to work with. So we look to continue that on after first of the year. Merry Christmas again to everybody this year. Again, I guess we'll see everybody on the fourth for sure. We've got elections and we'll probably have some appointments to make sure that board appointments are. Filled early enough that they can make their first meeting in January for any that are up. So all, Denise, could you get, get those most recent appointments out to us?
Yep.
Okay, I appreciate it. Anybody else?
And one more, one more thing, Scott. Please, everybody stay safe. Stay safe. You know, the news that we're hearing is not good, so everybody, please observe all the, the safety protocols. We need everybody back.
Thanks, Jane.
There are no emails and no Facebook questions.
Okay, great. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Ryan, second from Jessica. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thanks, guys.